All right, we will call the Belvidere City Council Regular Meeting of July 3rd, 2023 to order. If the clerk will help me with the roll call, please.
Albertini. Albertini is absent. Brereton?
Here.
Flurry?
Here.
Frank?
Here.
Freeman? Freeman is absent. McGee?
Here.
Mahal?
Here.
Porter?
Here.
Snow? Snow is absent. Six present.
All right, if you'll please join me and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, on the eve of our great country's Independence Day, we pray to thank you for the many blessings you have provided since our first Fourth of July, some 247 years ago. We thank you for our country, our community, and our freedoms. As Americans, on the eve of this Fourth of July, we pray to thank you for all our past veterans throughout our country's history, and for all our current brave men and women, military service members, we honor their service and sacrifice. We pray that you bless each of them as they represent our United States of America. And Lord, we pray that you be with our first responders, police officers, firefighters, and paramedic professionals who serve and protect our community and answer the call no matter what. We ask that you keep them as safe as they keep us, providing law and order, and emergency service in the performance of their duties. Dear God, tonight, we ask that you give each of us compassion, patience, wisdom, and courage as we conduct our city's business here this evening. We ask for these things in Christ's name. Amen. Do we have anybody registered for public comment?
We do not.
We do not have anybody registered for public comment. I would ask the council if we could take an item on the agenda and rearrange it just a little bit on the second page under motions of finance and personnel with Chairwoman Wendy Frank. I would ask that Item D, motion to consent to the appointment of Sandra Gramkowski as Alderwoman in Ward 3 to fulfill the remaining term of Alderwoman Cheryl Prather, be moved to Item 9 on Page 1 under unfinished business before A and B. And when we get to that point, we will take up that business. Also, welcome Captain Burdick, Chief Shadle. He's not here this evening, so welcome, Captain. Approval of the minutes, Item 4. We have A, approval of minutes of the regular meeting of the Belvidere City Council of June 19th, 2023, as presented. Could I have a motion of that effect, please? Motion by Alderman Flurry, second by Alderman McGee. Any questions, any corrections on those minutes before you? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion on the floor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed, thank you. Item 5, public hearing, we have none. Item 6, special messages and proclamations, we have none. Approval of Item 7, approval of expenditures, we have none on the agenda this evening. Item 8, committee reports and minutes of city officers. A, approval of minutes of the committee of the whole, public safety, finance, and personnel of June 26th, 2023, as presented. Could I have a motion of that effect, please? Motion by Alderwoman Mahal, second by Alderman McGee. Any questions, comments, corrections on that motion or those minutes? Hearing Alderwoman Frank, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to make a correction that on my public comment, I did not oppose the pride parade. I just said I opposed tax dollars to drag shows and sexually explicit books by the taxpayers.
Okay. Okay, that distinction will be corrected, as noted. Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion on the floor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed, thank you. And Item 9, under unfinished business, we are bringing forth Item D on unfinished business, as we had stated. That would be Chairwoman Frank. That's her motion to make regarding Ms. Gramkowski.
Motion to consent to the appointment of Sandra K. Gramkowski as Alderman in Ward 3 to fulfill the remaining term of Alderwoman Cheryl Prather.
Okay, we have that motion out of committee. Any questions, any comments regarding the motion on the floor? Okay, hearing none. All those will, when their name is called, answer aye. All those in favor of answer aye. Any opposed, nay. As the clerk calls a roll, please.
Brereton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mahal?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Six in favor.
Okay, motion passed. And at this time, then, I would ask the clerk if she would administer the oath to Sandra Gramkowski. Sandra, if you'd come up here, please.
You want to raise your right hand and repeat after me, "Aye."
Aye.
State your name.
Sandra Gramkowski.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Alderperson.
Of alderperson.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Well, congratulations. And can I get you to sit right there?
Sandra, congratulations. And that's where we're at right now. That's where we're at on the agenda. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, I want to welcome Ms. Gramkowski, and thank you for your interest in the city. And I know this takes a lot of time, but I certainly appreciate commitment. It's not easy. As we all know, sometimes there are things that come up, but I appreciate your commitment and stepping forward. So, welcome. And now there are seven. So, we will continue on the agenda. We have unfinished business, Item A, Ordinance 631-H for a second reading in front of you this evening, that being an ordinance authorizing the disposition of lost, abandoned, or stolen property pursuant to 765 ILCS 1030/3 regarding bicycles. If I could get that motion, please. Motion by Alderman Flurry, second by Alderman Porter. Any questions or comments? Alderman Brereton?
Thank you, Mayor. So, has it been past practice to donate anything to nonprofit organizations in the past?
Well, Chief, you might have to help me out here. I think it has, but it's been a while since I think we've had bicycles, for instance, specifically come forward. But if you wouldn't mind answering that, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, in terms of bicycles, I mean, some of these bikes we've had since 2012, so we've been storing them for quite some time. My understanding is historically, under Chief Noble, he attempted to sell them at auction, and had gotten ordinances to do so. The problem we ran into is the cost to do that when you have the auctioneer to fix up the bikes. They ended up losing money on the deal. And we have so many bikes that are in disrepair. To find somebody that's willing to take that on and then turn them around and give the bikes away to kids that need them seemed like a direction that would be that we would want to at least consider.
Thanks again, because, you know, we have several numerous nonprofit organizations in Boone County, and I don't think it sets a good precedent that we pick and choose. I know how, you know, irrelevant it might seem, but, you know, I don't think it's a good idea. Once you start giving things away, like I said, I could go down a list of, you know, you got CASA, you got Belvidere Youth Baseball, you got, I mean, there's, like, I could name probably like 20. So, I just don't think it's a good idea that we do this. I don't know how much more I need to say. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Alderwoman Frank.
Yeah, I agree about that, too, but my biggest thing is we've been collecting them for, what, 12, 13 years? And I really think they should be, they should stay in Belvidere. We collect them in Belvidere, they should stay in Belvidere instead of taking them to another city, which is still in Boone County. But, you know, we could have like an auction here, maybe like at the community grounds parking lot, and then just give them away as is. So, I'm not in favor of it.
Okay. I will, anybody else, any other questions, comments? I will, Alderman Porter, yes?
Well, I just think that it is a good idea to give it to an organization like this that can identify needy families, you know, instead of just random organizations. So, I think it's a good idea to, you know, give it to that kind of an organization.
Mr. Mayor, ma'am? Yes, Chief?
Yeah, you know, there's going to be so much legwork to getting these bikes in a position where they can donate them. And I know I've had conversations with Alderman or Alderwoman Frank. To our knowledge, the food pantry was the only one willing to do the legwork that was necessary to get these bikes in a condition where they could be given away. If there's other, you know, organizations out there, we're not above using them in the future. This was the only one that we were aware of. So, it wasn't necessarily picking them over the other organizations. There just wasn't another one that we knew of that was willing to put in the work that would turn around and then give these bikes to, hopefully, you know, children in our community. But ultimately, they're going to be the ones to identify those needy children.
With Alderwoman Frank?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, why don't we split them up? If we're going to do 75, couldn't we do at least half of them in Belvidere? I mean, I would even take on the challenge of doing it. I mean, I just feel like, how hard did we work on trying to find these people that lost their bikes? I mean, I told you the story, how my son lost his, probably like a week after he bought it, and then they scratched off the serial numbers, so we couldn't get it back unless we bought it back. So, I just think we should try harder.
Yeah, and all I can tell you, it's our process to cross-reference them with any reports, try and match the bikes up with anybody that's reported them lost or stolen. Absent that, you know, it's, that's the due diligence that we've done to this point in terms of splitting them up. Again, it's just a matter of finding somebody that's willing to put in the work, the money. Because, you know, you haven't seen some of these bikes. They're going to require extensive work to get them in a rideable condition. So, it was, you know, looking at a non-for-profit that can then turn around, and they do do a lot of work in Boone County and Belvidere, so I imagine those will be the children that they're going to target.
Alderwoman Frank?
Well, Empower Boone is about food. I mean, how do they have the money to buy, like, new tires and chains and all that? I mean, it takes away from their food dollars to be able to afford that.
I can't answer that question specifically on where they're getting the money. They have assured us that they're able to take on this challenge, willing to do it, and then turn around and, once the bikes are in a condition that they can be given away, that that's what their intent is.
I do know that in the past, I think it was Jim Bluege that whenever the bikes would become, you know, he would salvage them. He would take the bikes that may not have been worthy to be able to ride for a child, and I think he would swap parts, and he would make them. So, you would get a bike out of, you know, if you had 10, you might get five or what have you. That was done in the past, unfortunately. You know, we don't have that anymore. I don't have any preference regarding, you know, who should have these, other than I would like to see them dispersed to children in the community. But I will also say that when I was down, the last time I was down in the building that they're being kept, I had looked at them, and the chief had commented on this just briefly, is that, you know, they are, they're not new bikes, you know? There's some that are very dilapidated, and they're not going to be able to be made so that you can give a whole bike away. But I think somebody is going to have to parcel them out or place them together. Who that is, that's up to the council. I mean, if there's somebody else that we think that could have, that would use these bikes or put these out to children, that's a council, that's a council's call. I do know that we've got close to 80 bikes, I think, and they're in a storage facility now that we would probably like to be able to get rid of, move them out and make room. However we do that, certainly is up to the council. But our little history on that, we don't have the luxury of having somebody that will take these bikes and repair them like we have had in the past. It's been a long time, I think, since we have had that. Anyhow, it's a preference of the council. If there's a motion amendment to be made, feel free to make it. Alderman Brereton?
Thanks again, Mayor. Then I'll make a motion to amend that we take the bicycles to auction.
Okay. We have, do we have a second? We have a motion and a second, then, that the bicycles that are in our storage facility be taken to auction? And I guess we vote on the amendment? Is that discussed? The amendment, is that?
You can, you can have a discussion over the amendment, that's fine.
Okay.
If we are going to go that route, assuming we follow state statute and not use our home powers, that would not actually get done right away. We'll have to go back. We are required to publish under state statute and pay the cost of publication and newspaper to conduct the auction. We'd have to go out and hire an auctioneer to conduct the auction by state statute. We used to do those regularly when I first started in 2003. I think it was almost annually. They held a city auction. I think we had trucks sell for $15, to give you an example. We never did very well on those.
Okay. We have an amendment motion and a second on the floor. Alderwoman Mahal, did you have your hand up?
Thank you, Your Honor. I think the chief clearly stated that the auction was not a money, I mean, we didn't even break even. We've lost money, I think, on that. And I used to go to those auctions, and they went dirt cheap. So, in the interest of saving taxpayer money, I think we should not do an auction. And I do believe that they have done their due diligence and have picked the best possible solution in order to get rid of these bikes, and I'd like to see them go to Empower Boone.
Thank you. Alderman Porter?
Yeah, I agree with Alderman Mahal. I would rather see these go to needy children than just anybody who pays the price for a bicycle. You know, I used to go to those auctions, too, and I have quite a collection, but I would definitely rather see it go to needy children, though.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Flurry, did you have your hand up? No?
I agree with Alderman Mahal, but I didn't have a second.
Okay. All right, anybody else? Any other comments? All right, so we have an amendment on the floor, then, to have an auction regarding these bicycles. All those in favor of that amendment, will, when their name is called, answer aye. Those opposed, nay. As the clerk calls a roll, please.
Brereton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Nay.
Frank?
Aye.
Gramkowski?
Nay.
Nay.
Mahal?
Nay.
Porter?
No.
Two in favor?
Okay, amendment motion, amendment motion failed. So, we have the original motion that is on the floor, an ordinance authorizing the disposition of lost, abandoned, or stolen property pursuant to 765 ILCS 1030-3 regarding bicycles. Alderman Brereton?
Thanks again, Mayor. So, I'm going to make another motion, and I amend that we give the bicycles to CASA.
Okay.
Court-appointed.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second. That would be to give that to CASA. Any comments, any questions? Alderman Flurry, and then Alderman McGee.
Chief, did CASA put any interest in wanting these bikes? Or, like you previously stated, you said the only organization in the county or anyone that's contacted you has just been Empower Boone, and nobody else has contacted you?
That is the only organization that I know that is willing to take on the work of restoring these bikes to a condition that they can be given away so that they're rideable. I'm not saying that CASA couldn't. I just don't have that information.
Right, okay, thanks. Well, I'm just, I'm glad that there is an organization, and we can free up some space, save some money, and hopefully get these bikes to kids that need them. So, thank you.
Okay, Alderwoman, excuse me, Alderwoman Frank?
How did you reach out to people? Did you send everybody a letter? I mean, how many people did you contact?
No, this was information brought to me by Deputy Chief Wallace and Officer Blankenship, who have had conversations with Empower Boone. So, whether or not they reached out to CASA or other organizations, unbeknownst to me, I just know that this one is one that I did agree. They're a non-for-profit, so it was the organization that was going to be able and willing to do what needed to be done.
Okay, Alderman McGee, and then Alderwoman Mahal.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I think we should maybe reach out to find out whether or not these other organizations are even interested in taking this on. I don't think that you want to drop 75 bicycles on their doorstep just because we want to give them to them. If they're not interested, it doesn't make a lot of sense to me.
Okay, thank you. And Alderwoman Mahal?
Your Honor, I beg to call the question.
Okay, we have a motion to call the question.
Motion to call questions, like any other motion requires a second discussion.
Do we have a second? Second by Alderman Flurry. Any discussion? Alderman Brereton?
So, is this on the amendment, then, to give the topic?
Okay. All those in favor of calling the question, will, when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay. As the clerk calls a roll, please.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Nay.
Gramkowski?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mahal?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye. Was it five?
Oh, nevermind, that was five. Nevermind. Five in favor.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, be appropriate to entertain the vote on the amendment.
Okay, we have the vote on the amendment, then, to go ahead and give the bicycles to CASA, donate the bicycles to CASA. Any other questions?
No, they called the question to see his vote on it.
Okay. All those in favor, will, when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay. As the clerk calls a roll, please.
Frank?
Aye.
Gramkowski?
Aye.
McGee?
Nay.
Mahal?
Nay.
Porter?
Nay.
Brereton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Nay.
Three in favor?
Okay, motion fails on the amendment. So, we have the original motion on Ordinance 631-H authorizing the disposition of lost, abandoned, or stolen property pursuant to 765 ILCS 1030/3 regarding bicycles. The motion is in front of you, and if there are no further comments, we'll go ahead and vote on that. All those in favor of Ordinance 631-H, will, when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay. As the clerk calls a roll, please.
Gramkowski?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mahal?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Brereton?
No.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Nay.
Five in favor, Mayor?
I vote aye.
Six in favor?
I, you know, I don't know for sure if CASA is interested in these bicycles. So, I guess we should do what we have in front of us. We need the space. If we have a chance to put these bikes, at least a certain percentage of them together, and give them to children in the community, that seems to me that that would be the right thing to do. So, okay, moving on, Item B, Ordinance 632-H for a second reading, that being an ordinance granting a special use to allow in-vehicle sales or service within the planned business district located at 2002 Gateway Center Drive. Could I have a motion of that effect, please? Motion by Alderman McGee, second by Alderwoman Mahal. Thank you, and that is, will be the Club Car Wash at 2002 Gateway Center Drive. Any comments, any questions regarding that? We have Michael here representing Club Car Wash. Nice to see you, Michael.
You too.
If you have any questions... If you have any questions regarding that, Car Wash, you can ask, or we can ask Michael if we don't know. Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion on the floor then, will when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay, as a clerk calls a roll, please.
McGee?
Aye.
Mohal?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Gramkowski?
Aye.
Seven in favor?
Motion passed, thank you. And thank you for coming out this evening, and congratulations. We have item 10, new business motion, excuse me, motions forwarded from the Committee of the Whole Public Safety, Finance, and Personnel of June 26, 2023. Motions of public safety. Chairman Flurry?
Thank you. A, motion to authorize the mayor to sign the agreement between Inmar Intelligence and the City of Belvedere for the Consumer Drug Takeback Program.
Okay, we have that motion out of committee. Are there any questions, any comments, any concerns regarding that motion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion on the floor will answer aye. Any opposed, nay, as a clerk calls a roll, please.
Mohal?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Gramkowski?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Seven in favor?
Motion passed, thank you. Thank you, Chairman Flurry. Movements, moving on, motions out of planning zoning. Chairman McGee?
Thank you, Mayor. B, motion to approve the request from Super Aggregates to extend hours of operation from 5:00 AM to 10:00 PM weekdays and 5:00 AM to 3:00 PM Saturdays, effective upon approval to November 15, 2023.
Okay. We have that motion out of committee. Any questions, concerns regarding that? Alderwoman Frank?
Thank you, Mayor. Did you say that this was gonna be a temporary thing when they were the most busy, that they would extend those hours?
It will be effective upon approval, and that will go to November 15, 2023. They also, with some of the construction that we are going to have here, they've also felt that it would benefit, extended hours would benefit them to go ahead and satisfy the need, but they will not be doing any blasting, so.
Okay, so it's gonna be all the time, not just a temporary?
No, it's gonna be from now, as I understand it, whenever this is approved, until approval to November 15, 2023. Is that? That's what I understand. Yes. So there is a, there is a sunset on that, that being the date in the motion. November 15, 2023. Any other questions? Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion on the floor, will when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay, as a clerk calls a roll, please.
Porter?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Gramkowski?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mohal?
Aye.
Seven in favor?
Motion passed, thank you. And Alderwoman Frank, if they choose to extend that period of time, then the council will know. Okay? Thank you, Chairman McGee. Movements out of finance and personnel, one item, Chairwoman Frank, item C.
Okay, thank you. Motion to approve the PSEBA benefits for Officer Davenport in light of the line of duty disability pension granted by the Belvedere Police Pension Board arising out of an act of duty related to a river rescue that occurred on March 21, 2017.
Okay, we have that motion out of committee. Is there any comments, questions, concerns regarding that motion? Alderman Porter?
Yeah, I did have one concern. This, it says that it terminates upon him giving other insurance. Is there some way that we can monitor that? If not, can we modify it to require an affidavit on a, say, a yearly or a bi-yearly basis, or two year, every two years?
We've created an affidavit. They're gonna be sending out annually to anybody receiving the benefits. Asking, we've created an affidavit that we're gonna send out to all beneficiaries, asking that very question. So we're doing that already. We're gonna start that, yeah.
All right, any other questions? Okay, hearing none. We have that motion on the floor. All those in favor, will when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay, as a clerk calls a roll, please.
Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Gramkowski?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mohal?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Seven in favor?
Motion passed, thank you. Thank you, Chairwoman Frank. And motions out of public works. Who is vice? Oh. Alderman Porter, would you help me out with this, please?
E, motion to waive the bidding requirement for well number five repairs?
Okay. We have that motion out of committee. Is there any questions, concerns regarding that motion? Okay. All those in favor of the motion, will when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay, as a clerk calls a roll, please.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Gramkowski?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mohal? Porter?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Eight in favor?
Motion passed. And item F, Chairman Porter goes hand in hand with the previous motion.
Okay, F, motion to approve the proposal for well number five repairs from Kahoy Pump Service in the amount of $290,0587. This work will be paid for from the Water Depreciation Fund, line item 61-1780.
Okay, we have that motion out of committee. Any questions, any concerns regarding that motion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, will when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay, as a clerk calls a roll, please.
Frank?
Aye.
Gramkowski?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mohal?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Seven in favor?
Motion passed, thank you. And item G, Chairman Porter?
Item G, motion to approve change order number three for the wastewater treatment plant, 2018 improvement project in the amount of $123,756.80. This work will be paid for from the IEPA loan for this project.
We have that motion out of committee. Any questions, any concerns regarding that motion on the floor? Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, will when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay, as a clerk calls a roll, please.
Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Gramkowski?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mohal?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Seven in favor?
Motion passed, thank you. Item H?
H, motion to approve change order number one for, of the Irene and Hawkeye Water Main Extension Project in the amount of $16,728. This work will be paid for from the water connection fees.
Okay, we have that motion out of committee. Any questions, any concerns regarding that motion on the floor? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion on the floor, will when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay, as a clerk calls a roll, please.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Gramkowski?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mohal?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Seven in favor?
Motion passed, and item I?
Hi, motion to approve the proposal from Evaku Water Technologies for the sludge heater replacement parts in the amount of $19,224.38. The parts and installation would be paid for from the sewer depreciation line item 61-1790.
Okay, we have that motion out of committee. Any questions or concerns regarding that motion on the floor? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion on the floor, will when their name, will when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay, as the clerk calls a roll, please.
Frank?
Aye.
Gramkowski?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mohal?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Seven in favor?
Motion passed, thank you. And item J is the bookend to that. Chairman Porter?
J, motion to approve the proposal from Helm Service for the labor and equipment to install the sludge heater replacement parts in the amount of $8,414. The parts and installation will be paid for from the sewer depreciation line item 61-1790.
Okay. We have that motion out of committee. Any questions, any concerns regarding that motion on the floor? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion on the floor, will when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay, as a clerk calls a roll, please.
Gramkowski?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mohal?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Seven in favor?
Motion passed, thank you. And we have no other business on the agenda. If I could get a motion to adjourn, please. Motion by Alderman Flurry, thank you. Second by Alderman McGee, thank you. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you. For the record, we adjourned. Thank you, everybody, at 7:39 PM. Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Sandra, if you can give me a call Thursday or Friday, we can do some payroll. We'll set a time for you to come in and go over some payroll things and some other stuff, okay?